All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Have we been properly noticed?
The meeting has been posted according to law.
Roll call, please.
President Johnson, Trustee Harding.
Here.
Trustee Holm.
Here.
Trustee Moody.
Here.
Trustee Seager.
Here.
Trustee Wosnowski.
Here.
And Trustee Nugent is excused.
All right, thank you. All right, will do citizen participation per Village Resolution 2017-01. Anyone wishing to address the Village Board during citizen participation will be allowed five minutes. Your subject must specifically relate to matters under the jurisdiction of the Village Board, whether on the agenda or not. The Village Board should not engage in discussion regarding comments because it was not part of the publicly noticed agenda. Upon conclusion of this citizen participation segment, members of the audience are not allowed for their comment unless they are participating in public hearing or specifically allowed by a majority vote of the Village Board due to involvement in an agenda item. Going once. Going twice. You guys made me read that whole thing. All right, I will close citizen participation. Move on to consent agenda. One motion and a second will approve all the following items. Any item may be pulled from the list and voted on separately.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. We flip a coin. All right, questions or discussion on the agenda, or on the consent agenda motion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, apologies, I am going to take one item here out of order. We do have somebody who's online, this should be a very quick one. This is two?
Two under ordinances.
Yep. Okay, under ordinances and resolution, Resolution 2025-18, resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $2,470,000 taxable general obligation promissory notes, Series 2025B. This was what we were previously working on, the resolutions here, and we have Ellers on the line, Kayla.
Hi, everybody, glad to see you again. Today we held the successful sale of the village's taxable geo-bonds, Series 2025B. We received five total bids with the low bidder being Bach Financial Securities from Milwaukee. Included in your packet is the sale day report that outlines the bids and what they received. The true low interest cost of the lowest bid is 5.7%. Our planning rate that was presented to you in the pre-sale report was about 5.1%, so quite a bit of difference between what we originally anticipated and what the low bid came in at, which is a good thing. We've seen the market stabilize a little bit, and we put a conservative estimate in there. And so we were able to realize some cost savings, not only on the interest rate savings, but also on the unused premium, or unused underwriters discount that was taken. We downsized the note by $35,000, and then we're able to have a principal and interest savings of just over $100,000 from our pre-sale estimates. Included within your packet are a number of tables that show the sources and uses of funds. These are for land purchases and infrastructure improvements within tax incremental District Number Four, the majority of which are, were expended in 2025, but also some improvements that are scheduled for 2026. And so the Village Board adopted a reimbursement resolution, which these will then be reimbursed for. Table two is just the pre-sale estimate of all the cost of issuances and the actual sale estimates, showing that we're able to downsize by $35,000 in whole due to that unused underwriters premium. Table three is the allocation of the taxable notes. As you will notice, principles deferred for a number of years, that's really to match the cash flow of TID four, which will be a future exhibit, and allow their time to be increment coming online to pay off the debt in the appropriate amount of time. A quick snapshot of your geo-debt capacity, just to show that even taking on these notes, there's quite a bit of capacity still left for the village to execute all of its capital improvement projects and future projects. With this note, it'll put you at about 37% of your general obligation borrowing capacity in 2026. As you all are well aware, your general obligation borrowing capacity is limited to 5% of your equalized value on any year's basis. We project that forward to kind of give you a snapshot of where your current debt obligations put you at, and the highest that is, is in 2026 at 37%. The final exhibit is the TID four cash flow, building in the actual principal and interest payments for this note, and kind of showing our future projections as to the revenues and expenditures and any shortfalls there may be. As you can see, we've matched this pretty well with the cash flow to ensure that there's positive annual fund balance on a annual basis, even though there are some deficits cumulatively. The district is relatively new, coming online, and so this will give the district adequate time to kind of build out that revenue stream to be able to pay off the obligations. We are showing a full useful life needed to recoup all of the obligations, with the district projecting to close in 2039. Obviously, that will fluctuate based off of any revenues and expenditures that may be entered into, but this just is to give you a little snapshot that taking on this debt, that the district can still meet all of its obligations within its useful life. And then the following items are just the Moody's rating report, which reaffirms the credit rating from earlier this year as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? So we need a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-18, authorizing the sale and issuance, authorizing the issuance and sale of, what do we end up with a total number?
Does the, Kayla, does the resolution need to be a different number than what we've got in our agenda here?
No. The total amount is 5 million, or, sorry, it'll be on the, that, scroll down, scroll down.
I've got 2, 2,470,000?
Correct.
Taxable general obligation promissory notes, Series 2025B.
No, it's 2,435,000.
Okay, if we can adjust the motion accordingly. Thank you.
And he did that before it was seconded, so he didn't need to amend it.
I'll second.
Now it's seconded. All right, we have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion on the motion for the resolution? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kayla.
Thank you, thank you for taking me early as well.
Yep, have a good evening.
You too, okay.
Okay. We will get to miscellaneous business, Item 1, 2954 Main Street, project status and ordinance violation discussions. We have a, we have the property owner here to kind of give us an update on the project status, but at our last meeting, the board requested staff put together a memo, which is in our packet here, and I believe Chief and Eileen put that together, so do you guys kind of want to walk through that, and then we'll have Victor maybe come up and talk about kind of status and what's going on? Sure, go ahead. Can you just push the little people button, and it'll turn green for you? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Magnolia Stanford of 2954 Main Street, and I kind of would like to speak to you guys about kind of the allegations against my family that kind of came up last meeting. So last week, you heard from the neighbors residing at, excuse me, 2948 Main. Our relationship with these neighbors has always been strained, so their complaints were not anything new to us. Unfortunately, we have done our best to build a strong relationship with these neighbors. We've reached out to them, but they are very unreceptive to this. I'm not going to go super detailed into our squabbles with the neighbors, because I don't want to waste your time, but since she did bring up some of the issues, I did address each of them in a written document. I'm just going to pass these down, and you can peruse these at your will. Old school style, like we're back in elementary school passing it around. But what I do want to address is our relationship with the rest of the community, because I do feel like that was inferred last meeting, that we are having issues with our neighbors. So after the neighbors from 2948 did bring up their grievances, I decided it was time to check in with the rest of the neighbors. When we started this project a year ago, all of our neighbors received our phone number, just in case any issues did arise. Chris and Heather, they chose not to use this open line of communication that we tried to build, and, you know, we were very disappointed in that. But last week, I did go to all of our neighbors with the budding property lines, just to touch base, make sure they had our phone number, but I'm happy to report that nobody had any such grievances as our neighbors to the left. And this does include John from 2945 Main, as well as Roger located at 2958, both of which gave me their permission specifically to mention their situations, and both gave me their permission to report that they have no issues with this project at this point, and they seemed really excited about the project. The community in general has been really supportive of this project. Many people who are walking by will stop and ask us questions, like ask if they can, you know, take a look around. Early in this project, people were asking for regular updates, so we've done our best to keep our social media updates, photos, just to keep the community in general in the loop. The amount of positivity we receive off these is just amazing. We have such an amazing community. It's difficult to quantify the support we've received from the community, but one thing that is a little easier to show you, oops, is the physical comments that we have had from members of the community, so I've arranged some of those for you. I apologize, there's a lot of them, so the print is a little small. Based on the overwhelming support we've had for the, from the community, we were really disappointed not to see that support reflected in the board last meeting. I understand that the board probably hears a disproportionate amount of negative things about everything, and I'm sure we get a disproportionate amount of the positives. But as we are partners, and we should share the same goal, I did not expect the behavior I did see at the last meeting. Comments about how we don't care about this project, well, and next, excuse me, well acknowledging that my husband is working weekends and long hours and there all the time, is not only hurtful, but really confusing. I was expecting a meeting focused on mediation and solutions and how, how we can get this project done, but what I heard was kind of pettiness and punishments. This evening, what I expected was a professional and ethical treatment, not to be surprised with critical information pertinent to this meeting that was compiled and dated over 10 days ago, we received three hours ago. Actions like this really make me question the board's motivation, because it does not feel like the motivation is to help us. We knew this was a big project when we took it on, we weren't prepared for quite how big, and I know we've made mistakes, and, you know, we're not perfect, but our family has sacrificed time and money to complete our home. So rest assured, as much as you guys want this project done, we want it done more. We've put a lot of ourselves into building this home. I know you think we should be embarrassed by what we've accomplished, but I am very proud of what we have built in the past year. Thank you guys so much for just letting me share this perspective with you. If you have any questions about the community and any other issues with neighbors and people like that, just let me know. If not, I'll let Victor come up and get more into the technical nitty gritty.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, so as Maggie mentioned, we received this memorandum this afternoon, so...
Can I just address that real quick?
We received it at noon, Eileen.
Yes, I apologize for that. So November 6th was when we started drafting it. I worked with the building inspector and the chief of police on it, and I finalized it on Friday before it went in the packet. I did apologize for that, that was never intentional.
I totally understand. My point is, for this evening, I haven't had time to prepare anything for that. We can come back to the next meeting, and we can address all of that. What I have for you tonight is a written statement that I made about the last meeting, and we can go over the update that I prepared for the November 3rd meeting, but I, I haven't had a chance to review any of this.
So how about I propose this, for the contents of the memo, which were, that's, this was prepared at the board's direction, then why don't you have an opportunity to submit your written comments back to that to staff?
Yep.
And so we'll have staff at our next meet, well, I don't know if it'll be at the next meeting, because next week's Thanksgiving. What's the best way for us to address it? Because I don't think it's fair to have you guys have to...
Give them time to get, maybe first of December, or the first meeting in December?
Yeah, the problem is, is that's literally the Monday after Thanksgiving, so we have people on vacation, and everybody wants to enjoy Thanksgiving, so...
How much time do you need to prepare for that?
You know, if you guys would like to do a special meeting or something like that, I could be ready by the end of next week, probably, Thursday or something like that, but...
And the next week is, Thursday is Thanksgiving, so that wouldn't work really well.
Sorry.
No.
Then, yeah, it's, I think it may have to be after, after that, then.
Okay, somewhere in the beginning of December, maybe?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
So why don't we do this, we, let's have this then on the agenda, not for the first, but for the 15th. December 15th, that's the second meeting, and then we'll just have your written comments in there, if, you know, you get those over to staff, you know, shortly after Thanksgiving, then we can, we can walk through those.
Sounds great.
Sounds good? Okay, so let's focus on your comments and timeline.
Sounds great.
Sorry, go ahead. Can you hit the mic? It's not on. Push the, no, push the, this part. There you go.
There we go. I just, I just want to cover one thing, because I don't want this to happen anymore. The burning needs to stop, okay? We were out there, I looked it up, May 22nd of '24, May 24th of '24. I was the first time, Deputy Chief DeMio was the second time. We told you you couldn't burn construction material, period. I don't care if you say it's clean wood, it's construction material, it's in our ordinance. And then on 5/29, I came back again and re, I said it to you again, and then on the 8th of this month, you were burning again, Detective Heading came there, all she saw was leaves, but I was sent videos of you throwing wood on there, and the person that was working with you that day of throwing wood on the pile, that's construction material, you have a construction site. I just, I don't want it to come up again before the board meets again. We have to understand, I've told you before, no burning construction material. It leaves, fine, but it puts me in a bad position when I get videos of you throwing construction material on there, when I told you before.
Sure. I, I'm, yeah.
Do we, that's, I just need to, to get you to realize that we told you, you know, three times in May of 2024, and then you go and do it again, and it puts me in a position that I don't want to be put in. So I just want you to realize that we need to stop. No more.
Understood.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, so, since we purchased this property from the village, I've attended nearly every board meeting that I've been required to or requested to. The last meeting was the only meeting that I, I'd really missed. I've left job sites early, I've missed dinners, I've missed bedtime with my wife and kids, all to stand here and give you guys two-minute progress updates. I've done that because I take this project seriously, and I wanted to reflect well on the village. The only, the only meeting I missed was the last one, and honestly, watching it was hard enough. I heard comments that I don't care, that I'm an embarrassment, that I should be penalized at every cost, that the village should walk back the deal, and even speculation that my bank wouldn't stick with me much longer. Those comments weren't about construction, they weren't about compliance, they were about me as a person, about my integrity, about my finances. That crosses a line. It was unprofessional, it was hurtful, and it damaged my reputation. I've shown up month after month in good faith, and I deserve that same respect in return. What made those comments even more disappointing was the fact that in the same breadth, this project was described as a partnership with the village. Partnerships are built on respect, trust, and communication, and I didn't see those values reflected in that discussion. If this is truly a partnership, I think it really needs to start feeling like one. I know that you guys already heard from my wife regarding the neighbor issue, so I won't address that. I'll simply ask that the board recognizes that there's two sides to every story, and that we don't allow personal matters to get in the way of the overall project here. There was also some confusion about the timeline. We've owned the property for less than a year and a half. The early months were spent addressing some unexpected structural issues that required stabilization before meaningful progress could be made. It was costly, it was time-consuming, but it was necessary to ensure the long-term integrity of the structure. Taking much of the work on myself probably slowed things down. I take full accountability for that, but lack of care has never been the issue. No one who's invested this much time, effort, and money could fairly be accused of that. Major restorations take time. They can be inconvenient, but the inconvenience is a necessary part of progress. Restorations like this strengthen the community, they improve property values, and they preserve the character of East Troy. We shared the same goal here, to see this project finished and done correctly. I know that we want to see it done as quickly as possible, but urging staff to cite and find me will only slow things down. Every citation, every inspection demand and layer of red tape take time away from things that really move this forward. So I think the best way to move this forward is cooperation and not punishment. My family and I have poured everything we have into this home. We sold our house, we've lived out of suitcases for the last six months, we've put every dollar we had into stabilizing and rebuilding a structure that was far worse than anybody could have seen from the outside. We've stayed within our permits, we've passed inspections, and we've never once given up. I'm not here to argue, I'm not here to trade insults, I'm here to finish what I started, responsibly, legally, and with pride. I'd like to encourage you all to re-watch the last meeting and consider how far it drifted from professionalism and fairness. I ask whether this is the tone that the village wants to set for residents who want to invest their time and money here. All I'm asking is that the board holds itself to the same standards it expects of its residents: fairness, civility, and respect. If we can do that, I'm confident that this project will be one that everybody in the community can be proud of. With that said, I'd be happy to jump into the update from last meeting.
Yeah, so let's go through, let's go through your, your proposed timeline. I know we, when Scott and I came out.
Yep.
You showed us the property, and you're right, you know, Scott Johnson's comments and, you know, his inspections have gone well, so, and you and I talked the other day, appreciate the work you've done to clean up the, the job site, you know, especially in the front.
Yep.
And you're working on that. I know you had some delays with getting the windows.
Yep.
I know that the, you can't put in the glass block windows down in the basement yet, because you've got some pouring to do, but I think the one, you did have the windows for the upstairs that are still on.
We do have, three of them for the upstairs were damaged.
Damaged, right.
Yeah, we've boarded everything up at this point, so at this point, we are closed up, everything's sealed up for, for right now. As those windows come in, obviously, we'll be installing them, so we've got a timeline right now, it's supposed to be mid-December when those come in.
And I, and I've seen you've had HVAC people over.
Yep, yep, we're, we're currently working on, we've got a plumber selected, they're going to be getting started in the next week or so here. HVAC, we're still kind of evaluating who we're going to be working with, and we may be taking it on ourselves at this point, but we've got electrical contractors lined up, so at this point, I'm going to be kind of hands-off, and I'm going to go to work and make some money to try to pay for all of this for the next couple of months, while we've got the mechanicals going in, and then I'll be back after drywall goes up to put the finishes and touches on.
So we've got, so right now, we're, what do you know what today is, the 17th, we're about halfway through November.
Yep.
So would you say plumbing has started, is about to start?
It's, it's about to start, and, you know, the timelines, and, and as you know, I asked you the best way to format this.
Yeah, I understand.
And I would love to find a standardization that we can continue forward with, but my wife spends hours updating these, they're graphic images, and to get everything moved around takes a ton of time.
Yeah, I'll just say, as a project manager, Excel or Google Sheets, that's your friend, it's very easy to mock it up.
Yeah.
I appreciate the attempt at, at the image, I don't want you to waste a bunch of time, mock it up in Excel and make it easy for you, okay?
So the, the important thing to note here with the utilities, we've got the plumbing, HVAC, and electrical, most of those can overlap, so the, really, the important thing is here is that by the second week of January, somewhere in that time, we've got the mechanicals wrapped up so that we can move on to insulation and drywall. None of those individually should take, you know, more than four weeks on their own, and there may be some things, for example, the plumbing's going to get started first because it's the things that we can't really move around. Where the plumbing stack needs to go, it needs to go, and everything else kind of needs to work around that. So we got to get some of that stuff started, but then we're going to bring in HVAC after that, and because we don't want pipes freezing, because that's kind of how this whole mess started 10 years ago, we're not going to be doing all of the plumbing right away, because we want to make sure that we've got heat before we start filling the lines with water, that sort of thing. So realistically, you know, I think that we, we should be on track to have all of the mechanicals in and ready to go by Janu, or by the middle of January there, so that we can move on to the drywall and all of those finishes.
What do you have for a timeline as far as the siding and exterior?
You know, we're, we're really looking at that as, as a spring project at this point. We've spent months taking down brick, brick by brick, and cleaning them. We've got about 10,000 bricks in the backyard that are ready to go. Unfortunately, we've kind of run out of timeline here to continue with the masonry. So rather than spending a couple of thousand dollars and throwing up vinyl siding that we're going to take down in the spring to put, or put up the masonry, it's one of the reasons why we went with the expensive materials. We went with the zip system, it's warranted for five years uncovered, so that gives us a little runway where we know that the building is safe, we understand it's an eyesore, and we apologize for that, but to spend the money on vinyl or something like that, that we could throw up quick, just doesn't make sense when we want to preserve the integrity.
I agree with that. And you've discussed with the building inspector that you're having installation, and he feels comfortable with that zip system?
Yep.
And it won't be, any weather wouldn't get into the system?
Correct.
Your, the soffits, are the soffits done on that?
The soffits are not done, and that's kind of a separate issue with the masonry as well, because we have to replace the freeze board all the way around, and the soffits tie into the freeze boards, so it's kind of a compounding issue. We were really hoping to get those soffits up this spring, or this fall, because it's an eyesore, right, to be frank, but because that freeze board is what holds the soffit on in the front of the house, it's, again, kind of one of those things where we can't get too far ahead of one, one thing or the other.
It's not the eyesore idea, it's a progress thing. People really look at exterior being progress, that's the only reason I keep on talking about it. And then I still have the offer on the table, as we discussed when I was there, meeting with you. Anything you need as far as help, I am almost done with my kitchen.
Fantastic.
So I can come over and have labor hours put into the house if you need to.
Sure.
And I still have those great connections for the kitchen that I told you about, too.
Fantastic. Remind me, I know, because you've made some changes and you're trying to keep that masonry, what percentage is masonry in the plan?
It's a good question, that's something that we're trying to figure out right now. We're going to take the original masonry that we've restored as far as we can. We're still trying to figure out what we have budget for to fill in the gaps. We've found some bricks that are kind of a close match, and we're kind of trying to decide right now where we want to use those, where a good place to transition the siding is, that sort of thing. Our priority is the front of the house, we want to make sure that that's all brick, but at the same time, we want to wrap around the side as much as possible, so when you're coming from that, or from the square, you see a big, beautiful brick house. So we're even investigating whether the parts that are going to be covered by the covered porch, maybe we use some of the new brick there because it's not going to be as visible from the street, so that we can continue the original brick all the way around the backside of the house. So it's kind of an up-in-the-air kind of thing right now that's going to be dictated by budget and what brick we have left.
I think the only other thing, I was just looking, sorry, I was looking at your pictures from the last meeting. On the front, you've got kind of that gap there at the bottom, and I think that's what was that porch, that kind of overhang. Looking at you and to Scott, because I honestly don't know, I don't know, once you get the house heated with HVAC, are you going to have animals wanting to get under there during the winter?
So we were kind of going back and forth with that area as we were developing our insulation plan. We had gone back and forth whether we encapsulate it, whether we try to insulate the heck out of it. What we've come to the conclusion of, the best thing to do, we're going to encapsulate that, we're going to keep that as part of the building envelope so that we don't have cold spots under the floor. So we should be, I'll be closing that up probably this weekend. The other thing is, is because we're using the original foundation there, we have to use all green-treated lumber, so it doesn't weep up from the ground and all of that. So it won't be zip system there, it'll be green-treated board with a rubberized coating on the outside.
Thanks for coming, for the update.
Absolutely.
You've got the written memo there for the other items. If you can work on a written response?
Absolutely.
We'll go through that on the 15th, so I guess in about a month.
Sounds great.
And again, if you need anything, and to the comment about partnership, you and I talked about, I think you're about to get into, as you said, more hands-off for you.
Yep.
If you need help, whether it's connections, labor, options, just reach out to us and talk to us.
Absolutely.
We understand the challenges here, but also, too, and I understand there's always two sides to every story as well, right? But yeah, let's just make sure that we keep everything the way we need to do, so that's all.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Because everybody's so excited to hear the budget, I'm going to push that to number two, number two, I'm going to push that to the end here. Item three, consider write-off of uncollectible Apex Fiber Bulk Water Payment. And before we have a long presentation, about $56 or $60.05, I should say. I thought we changed, or we were going to change ordinance or the manual or whatever that would give you all the authority to do that, or is that state statute?
It does. Dina, can you refresh my memory? It only applied to one specific thing, and I couldn't authorize it for this. Do you remember what that was? It's escaping me right now.
It wasn't this.
Yeah, it was not this.
We looked into it, this part was not covered by that ordinance.
Yeah, so if we want to do like a certain dollar amount, if that makes sense, we can revise that again, but it was specifically written to address a certain circumstance, which I just cannot remember at the moment.
Okay. So I'm going to keep things moving, I'm going to move that we write this off.
Second that, is it a motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, it's a second.
All right, questions or discussion? All is in favor? Aye. All right, so please make whatever, bring that back to us. Just, you guys, I think we said something like $500 or $1,000 or something on the other one, so whatever makes sense.
And this wasn't something that could have been put in consent agenda either?
It probably could have.
It's okay. This is what I call, that's an expensive meeting. Okay, all right. For consider approval of engineering proposal for TID projects. I know Tim wanted to spend even more time with us, so I thought I'd give him, not make him sit through the budget, so.
Everybody remember Tim? He hasn't been here in a while.
Yeah, Parks knows who he is. So this is for a bunch of things, all kind of sidewalk and street related, right?
Yeah, we're just looking to combine some projects for efficiencies, save some dollars, hopefully for each project, they're like projects, and be able to bid them as one for next year.
Yeah, so there's essentially three projects in one. There's the bidding and construction management of the Main Street Sidewalk Project, which has already been designed, going through final approvals on that.
We'll be bringing that back at the, I think, the next meeting for you guys to take a look, approve the design, give any adjacent property owners an opportunity to speak, but that'll be at the next meeting.
And then there's the finishing of Corporate Circle from the business park that was constructed 25 years ago.
Yeah, and there was a map or a drawing in the packet that shows the two basically dead-end temporary cul-de-sacs where the utilities were put in, and we just want to remove those temporary cul-de-sacs and connect the street back up to form the lots.
So that was going to be my question, when you're done, it will look like there never was a cul-de-sac there.
Correct, yeah, the plans will include removal of the cul-de-sacs.
Okay.
And it'll be just a through road, kind of similar as it is to the east.
Okay.
And then the last modification is the modification to the existing pond that's just north of this map right here, to bring it up to today's standards for stormwater. And some of that, the majority of that design was done, I think, in 2018. So this is more of the construction management review of the plans to make sure they're still current, but the bidding and then the construction management as well.
Is the pond by Accurate Housing? Is that that pond?
It would be north of that, it would be right.
Right next to the freeway.
Yeah, right next to the on-ramp.
It's a triangle.
There's another pond there. It's not the one by Accurate, there's a north pond, another regional pond up there.
Sorry, it's on the Marcus property.
And there's an existing easement there that we'll be utilizing for the enlargement of the pond.
Is that a dry pond?
No.
No.
It's a wet pond.
It was built before the airport setback was in place. Now, the pond, the addition will be dry.
The addition will be dry and drain in there, it'll just give us additional storage, essentially as a forebay to bring it to today's standards.
I never thought I would say the sentence, is that a dry pond? So in the existing, I guess, retention pond there, do we maintain that, or does the association maintain that? How does that get worked out through this? Or is that a sore subject?
Well, the association does, the board's going to have to discuss that a little further with the property purchase.
So this is, and then the TID 5 portion is the sidewalk?
Correct.
Yes.
We'll be keeping our budget separate, because we're going to bid, this is one project, there'll be separate sections within the bid so that the different pots of money can be separated and kept separate.
And that portion of TID 5, there's no, because this is new sidewalk, there's no assessment to property owners, correct?
I have met with the affected adjacent property owners, there's actually only three of them, or their representatives, and I do have some comments back, and again, I'll invite them to the next meeting to be able to say what they want to say, but I have met with each one of them.
One of those properties recently changed hands.
I know it was listed, and I see that the sign is gone, so I don't know if it did indeed sell. The property owner I met with would have then, if it did change hands, would have been the previous owner, and I provided her an exhibit, and she was going to share that with any potential buyer, so.
Question, other questions?
So are we going to, we're considering a well in that one area where we're connecting the cul-de-sacs? Any consideration there?
Not with what you're looking at tonight. Yeah, we are looking at a well up in that area, but that has nothing to do with what we're talking about here tonight.
Make a motion to approve the proposal from Lynch and Associates for $149,155 for the combination of efforts from TID 4 and TID 5 Engineering.
Second.
Questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, appreciate it, guys. See you.
Again, we'll come back to budget and the public hearing there in a minute. Ordinances and resolutions, Resolution 2025-17, Resolution to amend special assessment schedule for ROP 0003, 2838 School Street, continued upon receipt of waiver of right to public hearing from property owner. Jason?
I don't think that's Jason.
Oh, sorry, I thought this was.
I will take that one. So there was a clerical error with the special assessments last year for the specific property. The approved resolution for the School Street project stipulated that we would do installment schedule for people that did not choose to pay in full, and they would have 6.5%, 10 years for those, and they would begin in December 2024. One of our staff members noted that that was missed in 2024, so what we are doing for this property, or proposing to do to the board, is that we would start them in '25 and do 10 installments, just like everybody else, we're not charging extra interest because it was our error. We did receive, what we had done was we provided the property, we spoke with the property owner, this is what she preferred, and we asked her to waive her right to a public hearing, because when you do special assessments, you do a public hearing, we're modifying her special assessment. She did provide that waiver today.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-17.
I'll second that.
All right, questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Ordinance 2025-11, Ordinance to amend the general development plan for Honey Creek Plan Development District for property located on Honey Creek Road west of South Executive Drive to change the personal storage facility standards for Lot 2 of CSM 4915 to allow electrical service to certain units. I-43 Investments LLC applicant, Paul Van Hinckelum, P-E-P-L-S agent, application 2025-26. This was approved at the previous, last week's Plan Commission meeting.
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-11.
I second it.
Questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for coming out. All right, well, let's just go to staff reports, let's get this knocked out. Municipal court? Anything? No? October financial report? Parking wreck board minutes from October? I was going to say, I have a list of some student citizen concerns about some parks I will be sharing once I have read through them and talked to them on Friday, so I will let you and Jason and Vicki know. All right. Airport advisory minutes from September 8th. Questions for Jim? Anything we should know? No?
No. Doug is back to work, Derek, as I understand, did a remarkable job in his absence. I think the big thing is we're waiting to hear back from the state on the master plan and what we can do to move forward with getting some of the new hangers built, new equipment purchased, but.
Sounds like I learned today there is some movement on the snow removal machine. I actually talked to the vendor, and they're finalizing contracts, so it's moving along.
And Plan Commission draft minutes from last, yeah, from last Monday? I guess that wasn't the third, but it was last Monday. All right. Now we're on to the main event. Oh, no, 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 no. So we have.
So flattered.
Yeah. We have the miscellaneous business item 2, 2026 budget, we have presentation, and then we will do the public hearing, so. Eileen, it is all you.
All right, do we want an abbreviated version? Should I go more in depth? I know we have two new members, so.
Abbreviated, the fulfillment.
Okay. I will do abbreviated, but if somebody has questions, I mean, there is a lot more detail. Obviously, with this, we are summarizing an extensive amount of detail, and the presentation really does focus a lot on general and capital funds, because those are our most significant funds as far as levy goes for the village, but I will try to breeze through this quickly. Fund accounting, we always explain what that is, that's the type of accounting the village uses. We have 15 funds in the budget, if you take a look at this slide, we do note those that do not have a tax levy. General fund has the most levy support, as I said, that is where we provide all the municipal services that people commonly correlate with municipalities. Revenues have remained fairly consistent in the general fund, with almost half of those revenues coming from taxes, and of the total levy without TID, we are at 67.2% of the levy being for the general fund. State aids, the biggest increase was general transportation aids with over a $40,000 increase. The expense trends are remaining fairly constant. The largest increase since 2022 is public safety, as a reminder, that includes law enforcement, fire rescue, and building inspection. With building inspection, when that goes up quite a bit, the revenue side goes up quite a bit as well, because that expense is based on the permit revenue. It is actually 75% of the permit revenue. In '24, we had a new officer that was paid for solely with that special shared revenue increase, so that contributes to a huge part of that increase. This year, the biggest percentage increase was conservation and development for planning services, but that was $7,207, and that wasn't all planning services, but a large portion. In those expenses, there's two, the two largest categories are general government and public safety. This slide just gives you a breakdown of general government, general administration's the most, Village Hall second most, but that includes maintenance and our data processing accounts, so a lot of our major IT expenditures are in that account, and they're half of the Village Hall expenditures. Public safety, you can see, police is obviously our largest expense, and then ambulance, EMS, followed by fire protection and building inspection. For capital projects, second largest levy, this year it increased $35,000, so it's positive that we're able to increase that, even if it is a little bit. Here's a summary of your significant capital projects, there are two noted that are not funded through the capital fund, the sewer-jetter and the School Street lift station, but they are significant. The next significant project that is actually in the capital fund is your Highway 20 multi-use trail, and over a million dollars of that is funded by a grant, and then that fire ladder truck is the second largest. This was in last year's slideshow, but it's just great to point out that we have over 1.6 million in grant funds that have been budgeted from 2024 through '26. Total budget, all funds. Total budget, all funds, the total revenue in the budget is over $13 million. You'll see TID five shows quite a bit of revenue. So that does include some of those borrowed funds that we are doing. So that's why you're seeing a higher amount there. And same with capital projects. We have some borrowed funds as well as some grant funds incorporated in that. So normally our largest revenue funds are general fund, water and sewer. And sewer and water, that's mostly from rates. Total expenditures exceed revenue. They're over 15 million. That is not unusual and it's nothing to panic about. Those are usually planned expenditures from reserves. So some of our capital projects are from reserves as well as the sewer fund. When we do some capital expenditures, that'll come from reserves. And then TID four is right now, the expenses exceed revenues at times. So you're going to see those fluctuations at this time, especially in some of those TIDS, because they're newer. This is the portion of the budget that is wages and benefits. We're a labor service organization, so obviously labor is a huge part of our expenses. But you'll see that our employee counts have remained fairly constant and there's great explanations for the increases that have occurred in 2019. That was when our school officer became full-time, so we added an officer. Used to be a part-time position. In 2024, we added that officer with the shared revenue and we also switched the airport manager from contracted to a full-time employee. The tax levy is obviously subject to levy limits. Our net new construction was 1.12%. This year, we are a little bit behind Walworth County in the state of Wisconsin. And that equated to a $27,000 increase. This shows the history of levy limits. I just like this graphic to show the board and public how erratic our increases in our tax levy are. That gray bar represents when the law initially went into effect in 2006. There was a floor of 2% to 3.86%. And you can see there have only been two years that we either have exceeded or been within that floor. In 2011, the law changed and it had to be directly tied to net new construction. So that's why you are seeing that we are below what was that floor previously. This shows the levy by fund. Again, general fund is your largest portion, followed by capital and debt service. TID four is now exceeding that, so that's good. We're starting to see more of that increment coming into TID four. This chart was updated from what was in your packets. I realized today that even though the years had been updated, the data hadn't. So you can see that the general fund, which is the highest level, went down a little bit. And the more erratic lines, like that darker line that spikes is your TID four. So when you see those or the one that stops in the middle, those are your TIDS. That one that stops in the middle is when TID three closed. Once we have the levy, we can, and the assessed values, we can calculate the tax rates. So we have our total tax levy with TID out. So that's what we look at when we're budgeting. Total tax levy this year went up by 64,000. That is all debt. That's not, we didn't use our full capacity of our levy limit this year. We'll be taking a different type of adjustment on our levy limits, so we don't lose that. And then with TID, it went up by 73,000. Then we have our assessed and equalized values. This year, the assessed value went up by $191 million because we had that market update. Equalized value didn't go up as significantly. It went up 48 million, but of that, about 41 million is due to economic changes, not new construction. So that, the DOR sets that equalized value. They do that every single year. And that's what's used for the overlaying tax jurisdictions, like the county, the school district gateway to distribute taxes, because it's a more fair and equitable way. Assessed value is done periodically. And again, we did that this year because we needed, we were out of compliance. Despite doing a reevaluation this year, we're only at 95% assessment ratio, which I'll show you in another chart and explain some theories on that. Once we have the tax levy and the assessed value, we can calculate our mill rate. So this year, our mill rate is decreasing by $1.77 because of that increased assessed value. Our mill rate went from 642 per thousand to 465. And again, your equalized rate's more stable because that value's not fluctuating as greatly. So it went from 446 to 443. As we've talked about during our financial management planning, we no longer qualify for expenditure restraint because our tax rate's too low. This is a breakdown of our mill rate by fund need. I will note the airport fund is at 11 cents. And of that, three cents actually comes from the taxes that are taxed on the hanger improvements. So that value. So it's really nine, no, eight. Yeah, eight cents per thousand, if you factor that in.
Property tax.
That, yes, of property tax. Thank you. This shows the mill rate on assessed value. Again, you see those fluctuations in 2016. We had a reevaluation, but we were assessed at less than 100%. So our tax rate went up in 2017. And then in 2021, we had a reevaluation. You see that significant drop. And again, in 2025, you see that significant drop. So that's the effect that those reassessments have. I like showing this chart. It shows the relationship between your assessed value, equalized value. Assessed value is red, equalized is blue. And when they intersect is typically when we've had a reevaluation. So again, 2016, 2021, you see they intersect, because the goal is to get as close to 100% as possible. This time, we're at 95%. I did talk to our assessor about it. He said, you know, I go through every property and I compare it to market values and sales. So he feels that our equalized value may be too high. So I did talk to the Department of Revenue about it and he's going to talk to them as well. So we'll see if there's any adjustments. We've had a lot of economic adjustments to our equalized value. The one thing I really want to talk about is what this market update did with assessment classes. So typically what we tell residents is if your assessment's not going up higher than the average percentage, your taxes won't go up because our levy, not because of the reevaluation, because our levy is restricted by levy limits. But what we saw this year, and they're seeing statewide and indicative of the market conditions, is the residential class increased at a greater pace than the manufacturing and commercial. So residential went up 46%, manufacturing 40% and commercial 33%. So we're seeing more of the tax burden shift to our residential property owners. So they are going to see higher tax bills this year. So the average home value went from two, I think that says 231, to $340,000. That was quite an increase. The village portion of the average home, on that, based on the average home value is $1,584. That would be a $98 increase from 2024. And that, remember, that's just on the village portion. That doesn't include school or county or gateway. The levy increase was 10 cents per thousand, so it only accounts for $36 of that $98, which means that the rest is related to the increased values for residential properties. This chart just shows where the tax dollars go. Walworth County was based on a preliminary apportionment and today we got the final. And all it does is change it by 0.01%, so 15.4. So this was pretty accurate as far as where that full tax dollar goes.
Has the schools adopted theirs?
The school has adopted theirs and they're at 49.73. They do have their, that referendum is on there, the most recent one, the first year. This just shows your debt. And the big thing to note here is it really says general obligation on there and it really shouldn't. It should say probably capital projects for the purple. So a lot of the debt we have outstanding is not levied to our taxpayers unless it's in the purple section, even though it's called general obligation debt. We issue water and sewer at times as general obligation to take advantage of better interest rates. But if you look at this, the purple's the part that we levy for in our debt fund. The blue is for TID four, red is for sewer and green is for water. So it's important to remember that as you're looking at our outstanding debt. I am not going to review this detail, but the village's obligations from the fund balance activity that occurred in 2025, which accounts for accumulated fund balance purchases where we set aside, Jeremy does this a lot for his department, I do this for IT, we set aside funds over numerous years, things that were budgeted for fund balance or things that came up throughout the year that the board authorized. That's 95,000. We did pay 43,000 in addition to that, because we are going to be reimbursed for the TAP grant, planning study for the Maguannago to East Troy Trail. And once all those numbers are finalized, we'll submit for that reimbursement and we'll also bill the town of East Troy and the village of Maguannago for their portions. In the general fund, we only spent 2,436 of what we had budgeted for from reserves. And that'll only be used if we don't have an operational surplus. In '26, we have $302,490 budgeted for coming from surplus. $175,000 of that is for that Highway 120 multi-use trail. A lot of times we'll pay for those type of projects from either fund balance or borrowing when they're grant dependent, because a lot of times we don't know if we're going to do the project till we know if we get awarded the grant. And then the other big one is the ambulance for the fire district. We had set aside some funds for that, so we're paying a portion of that from fund balance. This just predicts fund balance, but it's extremely conservative and it usually does show it going down, because we never account for any surpluses or additions to the fund balance. So it's always a very conservative projection. The one thing I wanted to note about the levy document, there was a note, or I'm sorry, the levy, the budget document, there was a note in it, but I wanted to make sure the board is aware of it. The public notice that we published did not include a TID four levy in it. I had noticed that after it was published. However, the board can make changes at the public hearing. And the TID four levy is not something that we just decide how much we need. It is a complete calculation that happens off the increment, which is spelt out by the state. So a lot of times what's in the budget document is a guesstimate. Until we have everybody's levy, we can't calculate what the TID four levy is anyway. Were there any questions on that? Was that fast enough? I tried.
One, very good. And, you know, I think I said this past couple of years, because we had a whole turnout of John for these, is that I think the lack of turnout shows, though, like, the level of transparency that we have, both with this presentation, but throughout the year, the work with others, building this up, the consistency that we apply to this, the rules and the guardrails that you guys put in, all the work that staff puts in throughout the year on this. So thank you for another excellent work on this year's budget.
Thank you.
I guess the only other comment I was going to make, I guess, for anybody who wants to watch this. What was your slide? Your slide, assessment class increases, you know, 46% residential, 40% manufacturing, 33% commercial. And your comment, you know, that puts more and more, because of the assessment increasing faster for residential over manufacturing and commercial, it puts more burden on the residential taxpayers. Eileen and I, we were taking a look at, that was something we talked about long ago when we first started TID four. And it was kind of like, oh, we're making progress. And, you know, well, this kind of wiped that out. But imagine if we hadn't put in the work that we've done on the TIDS, then this would have been even worse. So I also want the public to understand that that's why we've spent so much time talking about the TIDS up here.
Well, I guess I will formally open the public hearing on the 2026 budget. Any comments? Any comments? Going a third time, any comments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Item C, consideration of ordinance 2025-10 appropriating funds to operate in 2026 and adopting levy. I will make the motion to adopt ordinance 2025-10.
I'll second that.
Questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?